Is it working this time?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the last time there was a screen that was up that I shouldn't have clicked in on probably.
Um, today I made sure that I ran like a test trial before the meeting.
Yeah, it was back to it was back to its normal status.
Yeah. So I'll do that every Thursday or when we have our meeting, that's what I'll do. I'll just check, double check if that nobody touched it beforehand.
I'm gonna try and join on my iPad.
Okay.
I saw Bill do that and that's good because then I have presence on both roles. Is there any? Yes, sir. If you want, you've got it. Let's see. Eight nine seven. So Michelle, is there a way that we can stop this game of chicken every week to see like who's gonna ask to come and everybody else sandbags it and told, you know, they're like, okay, I'll come.
I think we have to stop doing Zoom and Zoom is only for me, so I don't have to come back into Woodstock.
Zoom for me for you, yeah.
I mean, that's what every other board has been doing, so.
What's that? They're not doing Zoom?
No, everybody's been coming back in person. I mean, I think Town Board is the only ones that are still doing um the hybrid and Planning Board, but that's because some of those members do have health issues. Hey, there you are. Oh, just have to mute it. Perfect. Oh, that's easier because then you can see the people who are raising their hands or whatever closer to you, right?
Well, this way they'll have direct uh looks. There's a delay. I won't look at myself on the thing, but at least I have a presence.
Cool. And you couldn't open Martin's decision either, right?
What's that?
You couldn't open Martin's decision either?
Oh, I totally forgot. Somebody else called and I it totally, so it will just, it's just a denial. It doesn't matter. It's not stopping anybody.
And it's already there, so. Yeah, we can vote on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I can talk to you directly on uh. Told him I had a meeting. I think Jude should get a job as the zoning enforcement officer.
Did you read the article in the paper? Did you read the article in the paper?
Yeah, I'm getting a, you know what it is? It's the air, I have to turn the TV off. The air conditioner is making a lot of noise.
Oh.
What'd you say?
Did you read her article in the newspaper?
Who's?
Jude's.
You wrote an article?
It was in the Woodstock Times today.
About what?
About the the document that you guys submitted.
Really? That be concerned?
Parts of it, no. No, I think it's just her own opinion.
You can't help yourself. Wish she wouldn't do that shit. I wonder who she's voting for.
Let's hope everybody's voting for Bill.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I know.
This meeting is being recorded.
It's on, but it's just not running all the time because it's on seventy. It's kind of noisy. Do you want to open the door or something? Open a window? Rather you open a window. That just recirculates air in the room anyway.
You can turn it off if you want or or switch it, whatever.
Sitting down here, so.
Hey Jude. So glad you could come in person.
I have better control now. I'd like to call the Woodstock Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for June twenty second, two thousand twenty-three to order. Do I have a second? Favor?
Aye.
Hey, we have a forum. Gordon Webb. And on Zoom?
Marcia's willing.
Hey. Changes additions to the meeting agenda. Yeah, I saw your thing about the, if we have time, okay? Uh, I'd like to submit the minutes for approval for May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three and June eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These are approved, minutes are approved. We have three public hearing scheduled tonight. Uh, we go in order of how they were received. So we're gonna start with ZBA case number twenty-three seventeen. Application Alan and Wendy Blum for property located at one seventy-five California Quarry Road, New York, one two four nine eight. A three acre parcel located within our three zoning districts for four areas, running low to town of Woodstock, Article four, area bulk regulation, section two sixty, dash twenty-four B. Accessory structures and features in yards in order to construct a twenty by thirty in-ground swimming pool in a front yard. Hey, gentlemen, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeffrey Harden. I live at one thirty-two Wittenberg Road in Bearsville, New York.
Alan Blom, one seventy-five California Quarry. Say, you want to give us a little narrative of the of your project?
Yes, we are interested in putting in a pool, just as you said. Uh, we believe that our setbacks are all correct and that it is not visible from the road. We were surprised to learn that this is considered a front yard, but I guess now that we look at it, I can see why they would, it would come up in conversation. I can say that the grade of the property is such that this pool would not be seen from what you would consider to be the front yard. Um, in fact, it wouldn't be seen until you're well up California Quarry Road, at which point you would see it regardless of where it was on the property.
Oh, yeah, sure. Here, we have, here we have you here.
So you're saying it can be seen from above?
It can be seen from as you go up California Quarry. It's quite steep after you make this, this turn, it starts to go up pretty steep and yes, you can look down on it. Um, there are trees in the upper part above our driveway. You know, I haven't really scoped it out from there, but I suspect it's fairly visible. Not possessed enough to look.
And so figure this out because so there's the existing home. There's a proposed pool. So your house faces which direction?
The the front of it faces up the hill and faces the driveway.
Faces the driveway, so that's why you consider it a good yard.
Exactly, right.
Even if it were the other side that faces the road, it seems to run parallel to it. The only thing is, is you have California Quarry Road wraps around, so sometimes that enters.
Well, yeah, uh, Butch showed me the rule and clearly.
If you're like moving on a corner line, you have to front yard.
Yes, so here we are.
And you know, that has to do, I guess, with visual appearance. It gives us the opportunity to do it. So you know, if you look right on the corner piece and you say, well, that's my side yard, I'm going to be a pool right, right by the street, you know.
I mean, it's a heavily treated area.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really no visibility there.
Um, either do you like to uh?
I have, I have like a height problem, so I don't want to swim. I don't like.
You like driving up that road?
I'm happy to go.
Okay. Joe knows that road well, right, Joe?
I do know well.
Okay, so Joe just does do a, he'll do a site visit. I don't know if you need him to call you or if he's able to just.
I'll be happy to meet you there. I'm sure Alan is there most.
I mean, I'm there.
Okay.
Now and Sunday night, my wife will be there, probably Monday. Coming back. I have been with her all next week.
Can I keep this for?
Yeah. We can, we can divvy up these, right, Michelle, or three or four?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the best number for you to reach you?
Nine seven three.
Not on record.
Seven six eight.
No, no, no.
Don't put it, don't put it on the Q two. Um, here's how, here's how the application.
I'll get the rest.
So, so I, so I just, you know, we have sixty-two days to make a decision, so Joe may not be there.
We don't have another meeting for for three weeks. An extra week. On a short month, an extra week.
So can you walk us through the process, even if it is in a, so you're saying?
I'm gonna call, I'll come over and take a look at it just to visualize the property.
Is it you that makes the call or we come back and talk about it?
No, we just, this is the public hearing. We won't have another one because we have to advertise.
Okay.
So, so anybody, neighbors and whoever, and we sometimes get people saying, I don't want that pool mixed in my house.
Yeah, and it's possible that other members may drive by also and look at it. Will, we discuss it and we have questions.
Yeah, we won't have another, well, we can have more written communications, uh, send emails, anything else that that may be required. We have, we can have discussions with you directly, if maybe Joe can, and uh he'll uh, you know, we usually have a few conversations, um, when we can, person to person, and then we write, write it up and.
Well, needless to say, we're eager. When we got to know that this was being passed to you, all the shovel was right about there.
It's gonna be three weeks at least, uh, because, you know, we'll try, we'll do our best.
Well, thank you for any extra.
It'll be the second week of of July.
And you think there'll probably be a decision.
Second.
I'll make sure I get.
The second.
I'll make sure I get there in enough time to add something for that meeting.
Second Thursday, July, alright.
Don't want the shovels to stop.
We don't want the shovels, but they're stopped, just so you know.
Charging storage.
What's that?
Charging storage.
Well, are they in the process of putting in the pool? Is that?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay.
We leave links.
No, we were just hoping to have a pool this year.
In there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 we have to read the contiguous neighbors.
Hold on, we have to read contiguous neighbors.
Um, Silver Trust Summer, one eighty-five California Quarry, Hassan Tarani, one sixty-five California Quarry, James Hagedorn and one sixty-one California Quarry, Eileen Groll and Richard Miller, one sixty-six California Quarry, and Claudia Parello, Martin Feinberg, one seventy-two California Quarry. There is no communications received.
And nobody is here except the other applicants, which I, I'm gonna guess that they don't care about your project. They don't.
I guess we're good.
Tell those guys just to say yes, say yes to everybody. Sorry for those. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Decisions.
Wait, Gordon, you have to close it and recess it.
Yes, I know. They just, they took up some questions to do that, so. Hello, uh, close the public hearing. One second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, and I'm going to recess case number twenty-three seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Okay, moving on. ZBA case twenty-three eighteen, application of Shonda and Daniel Cena.
Good pronunciation, thank you.
For property located at thirty-six fifty-three, two twelve, Bearsville, New York, one two four nine eight, one forty-nine five eight, parcel located within the art district. For ranch and zoning law of town of Woodstock. Regulation modification required zero setback, section two sixty dash twenty-sixty-two B, born eight foot in front of it into a twenty-five side yard setback in order to construct screen porch addition.
Yes.
Okay, so. You're on. You want some stuff? There you go.
This is a swimming pool on California.
Did I give you a swimming pool yet? Oh. Here we go, here it is.
Fantastic.
Got me on my own side of the hand.
I'm gonna have to get this real quick. I thought I had extras of that, but I don't.
It's okay.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so why don't you talk us through this?
Um, so we are, uh, we were in the process of building a, uh, in addition to our home, a screen porch, preseason porch, and um our neighbors noted that they felt like it was too close to the edge of our property. Our edge of our property is, um, we have an easement that goes pretty close to our uh land. You can see on that map. We uh stopped construction, you know, if you want me to show you.
We, we had.
So we have an easement.
We actually had a building.
Also, so.
We actually had.
That's a very good point. We had a permit which gave us the the permit. We also were working off information from the previous owners to our land that indicated a large boulder that was the edge of our property. And we were working off of that. So after making, getting the permit and our neighbors noting it, we got a survey done. We already started construction, but we thought it would be the best, you know, maintain.
So do you have a right of way through this property? Is that what it is?
Yes.
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 That's what this shaded area is.
The shaded area is the deeded right of way.
Deeded right of way, and there's nothing on this property?
The part you're pointing to, no, that's wooded area.
It's not.
And that's the neighbor that that brought this to you.
Correct.
That is right. Their house is not actually.
As you can see, yeah, as you. The neighbor, so this is the, this is the drive.
That's the near, that's.
And their house is all the way up here, so it's absolutely nowhere near their house. It's nothing. Our property's set, unfortunately, the line is very close. It is literally our front yard, but so.
We did a survey. We noted that it was closer. I immediately came to Butch and said, look, he was shocked that I had brought it up entirely to him. And uh, but he said, okay, we'll put a hold on your current building permit, do an appeal, and we uh, and we're here.
Yeah, we just wanted to do right by everybody. We, it was a mistake that we didn't know. We, I, we've actually lived on that property for over twenty years. So when we purchased, we purchased the property three years ago, um, my landlord, who has passed, had always shown us where the, we thought the property line was. So we were making those the 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 uh architecture, the plans, we actually already started the building. We put in the uh helical posts before this was, and then we stopped everything then. And so we just wanted to keep it up and up, make clean. So our calculations are based on something that we thought we were accurate about. Come to find out, when we got the survey, it was about seven feet from that original.
So. You were too close to the property line, which in fact you are.
Yes.
So where does your neighbor stand now?
Where's her neighbor's what?
Stand, so stand.
All I know is they wanted this to be done correctly, uh, you know, with the board, with the town, that everything was on the up and up. Um, that's.
So they weren't objecting to it as far as?
No.
Not that I know. I think they were just concerned about higher things.
She's shaking her head, so that means we haven't done any communication.
No, I've never, no, I didn't even know there was a problem with the neighbor.
What were they concerned about?
The legality of it.
Yeah, like that it was.
They noticed that it was probably illegal.
Yeah, and I, and we were just like, okay, great, no problem. We'll go through the process. It was, it was, it was confusing to us a little bit anyways, because literally it's, it's where we've always parked. It's where I've always had a garden. It's where I've always. So the porch would be where I used to have a full garden. So we were confused why it became such a like, they wanted to have it set, but that's fine. It's their land. We wanted to do right by them, be clear for ourselves.
Well, I don't want to speak for them. I think people are, you know, puffy about where the property lines are because there was that sort of oh, you start using someone else's property and they allow you to. So I'm sure they just wanted to clarify what.
Right, but this is not on their property.
Right.
This is still not on their property.
Well, somehow they thought maybe.
Well, like.
They hacked the property.
Yes. That they asked us to do that. When we found that out, we stopped construction.
We were kind of like.
We filed for the variance.
We, it was the night before our contractor.
Was actually gonna come and continue.
We have the foundation in.
Because we had the.
And they were gonna start building. And then we got an email from them and they expressed concern.
Well, they had to shovel yours a little further back.
Yeah.
We're seeing pattern here tonight.
But we had actually already begun. We actually had.
Yeah, we have, we have a little over six thousand dollars already invested.
Permit already.
We had, and they, they held the permit that understandably.
This is just curiosity.
Yeah.
Did you have a conversation with them since you found the property line and what you're going?
Just that we can, we corrected ourselves. We said, um, this is what we found out, and they said, well, we hope that you go and you do da, 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 make it all right. We sell and this and that and the other. I was like, fine.
It's not necessarily a bad thing.
Oh, exactly. So we said, fine, that's what we'll do.
We have a very good relationship.
In general, we have a very good relationship.
Yeah.
And did you, did you say you lived there for twenty years? You were. More than now. Okay, so you've been using that then? I've been using that exact same plot of earth. It was a, it was a big, it was a deck and a big garden. And now it's going to be porch, so. So correct me if I'm wrong, but.
What's that, Marcia?
I said, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a question for Joe. Isn't there, um, I care, I was trying to look it up really quick. There's a, there's.
We turn off the, hold on, can we turn this off just for a minute?
I have a hearing impairment too, so it's like double.
Yeah, I've got, I've got the, I can't hear the great ones. Well, we can't hear the lesser sound from the greater sound.
Being a man? No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, old age too, but I've always had.
Okay, so I think this is something maybe Joe knows the answer to, but there is a real estate easement that if you're using the property as your own for over ten years, I believe. What?
We discussed that.
It's an adverse possession.
Right, so in other words.
It's very hard to get it. I mean.
Yeah, and that's not actually the case here.
That's not the case. This is our property.
It's their property, so they're all.
Our property, which is, okay. It's so, it's just a setback. Their front yard, which is no consequence to where their houses or where they drive.
It's better that this happens now than they come to us later and then we have to.
That's why we wanted to just come clean, do it correct.
Later and we can say that all this thing was stolen.
Agreed. We didn't want that. That's why we stopped immediately and we came in for the variance.
I mean.
We wanted to make it all clean and clear for everybody. It's not our.
I, I applaud you guys for bringing it to Butch's attention and, you know.
Well, like I said, our relationship, our relationship to our neighbors is very important to us. It's a long relationship. The mistake we made was innocent.
Yeah.
It was, you know what I mean? It was not ever.
Several people, I mean, here. Possession thing. I, I sort of see it more as like a detrimental reliance that you relied on the permit being issued and spent money on it.
Yeah.
I think that should carry some way, you know.
Absolutely. And that we already, we already spent quite a bit of money. We already began. It's really a very.
Does anybody want this one?
I'll take it.
I'm gonna stay with the, with the third one, so that's good.
Okay. I'll take it. Gordon, do you want me to take it?
Dude, Jude's taking it. You gonna fly back?
Jude was gonna do my site visits for me.
Well, you guys can work together on this. I have no problem with that. How we wanna handle it? As long as it gets handled.
Dude, I can do it and have it done by the next meeting. Seems very cut and dry. What?
Yeah, you're both on it. You guys can talk afterwards.
Fighting over you.
Wow.
Yeah. Particulars can be settled afterwards, so.
Okay.
That we, let's do the contiguous neighbors.
David Kirkpatrick and Sharon Gannon, three six fifty-one Route two twelve in Shady, Lucina Nouse, Nouse, sorry. Uh, thirty-six sixty-seven Route two twelve in Shady, Kingston City Water Department and Ulster County. Uh, P O Box eighteen hundred in Kingston. And there's no communications.
Okay, well, I don't see anybody which is talking about it, so with that, we will, um, you know, we're gonna, we'll close public hearing, we'll close public hearing, we'll recess the case. We'll deliberate, we'll visit, and we'll wrap our decision. Hopefully, we can get it done. Sounds like we have motivated the crew.
Alright.
So uh, that would be the second week in July, we should go to, issue this.
And we return to the public hearing for that, no?
No, no, you just, you call from Michelle, um, the day after Friday, um, after the second Thursday.
Okay.
See if the decision's been rendered.
Okay.
She usually emails it out that Friday anyway.
So say someone would email us also.
Yes, yes, okay.
The other thing is if you wanted to, you can join the meeting on Zoom, but I don't know why you would want to. It just sifted everybody else's.
Okay, okay.
But if you're anxious, if you're anxious, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, great. So with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. Favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to recess case twenty-three eighteen. Do I have seconds? All favor?
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on.
Will you be coming for a visit? Is that a part of it?
Okay, that's what I figured. Thank you.
I can give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, don't read it out.
Okay, ZBA case twenty-three nineteen, application of Brian Ruff, represented by Lintiano. P O Box twenty-one Willow, New York, one two four nine five, property located ninety cross Patch twelve, Willow, New York, one two four nine five. Located in an R five zoning district for variances in zoning law, the town of Woodstock, Article four, area bulk regulation, section two sixty, uh, sixty B, AP to allow an increase of two hundred fifty-eight square square feet. To allow an increase of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet, over the allowed thirty-five percent lot coverage of primary residence. And two-hundred-and-sixty-sixty F to allow more habitable space, and two-sixty-sixty B, E, and F. To allow an increase of eighty-seven square feet for area of accessory apartment in order to construct an apartment above a three-car garage. Okay, here we are again. How you doing?
Oh, me too.
Good. Okay, so, um, you may all recall, we've had this before as an interpretation, and now we're, we have it as a variance. You guys need Linda to run through this again?
No, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I don't believe that when I was here before, we talked about lot coverage. So, so the garage also, when we're talking about lot coverage, it's not just the accessory apartment, it's the three-car garage as well, right?
The apartment's gonna be on top of the three-car garage, so that's the square footage.
Right.
That's, that's the only part that's lot coverage, just the foundation.
Right, right, so we're talking about the whole structure, not just the accessory apartment. And when I was looking at the drawings, I, pardon me for, cause I don't know about these things too much. The apartment is not larger than the garage, it doesn't extend beyond?
No.
No, it's just, just the way that elevation looks. And there's an exterior staircase?
Yes.
That's the extension that you're seeing probably, oh, I see that little thing on the left there.
Yeah, but this looks like there's something up above too.
I think the architect just put in like a little roof.
Yeah, I, I think she's talking about, like, see that little area there?
Yeah.
I would like, it's like it's fixed up, past the garage.
I think it's just the, the. It's like, there's gonna be like an overhang for the roof.
I know, it just shows like this little bit of siding, it looks like it's, that's why she was asking.
I think that's what you're looking at, is that thing.
There is, yeah, it does jut out a little bit, right?
There is a second floor canopy.
Right, there is a canopy, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it might, I could, I don't need that, I can always just make, it's gonna be thirty by forty, so I think it will be somewhere around there.
Yes.
So when you were here before, I think they were talking about a thousand square feet, so there's a media room, right, which is not being counted as part of the accessory apartment, right? Or some kind of.
There is.
Something in the application about it?
Well, there, the, as far as usable space, your bathroom, the closets, the storage areas aren't considered usable space.
And what I'm getting at is they, he didn't include in the application, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, Gordon, you do. But in, in the application, it was the, whatever it was, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight or eight-hundred-and-seven square feet accessory apartment, not counting this, what do they call it, a media room or a something room?
There's something in that here.
Yes, there is somewhere.
Where?
And then, not in the application?
Yeah. Somebody gave it to me.
Second floor accessory apartment.
That's it.
And it says not counting this other room.
The what? Where does it say that?
It's not in this application.
Is it in the referral form?
What?
Is it in the referral form, maybe Jude?
Not for me.
Something about seventy-eight foot or something, there's another room.
Find it.
There is no other room.
Thought I was like.
What, what's the difference between the first request and this?
It was an interpretation of Butch's inter- interpretation of the zoning law. You guys found that he was correct in his interpretations, now I'm here for the variance that I need.
I see, got it.
I need a place to live, so I'd like to move this along.
And so I'll be making a site visit, uh, is there somebody there, should I call them, whenever?
Yeah.
Go off or?
You should probably call them, cause there's a couple of dogs and sometimes they're out.
Not including the seventy.
Who am I calling you?
Not including the seventy square foot screen room.
Screen?
Eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven square foot proposed, not including the seventy square foot screen room.
Is that like a standing porch?
We took that out of the drawing, if you have the drawing, I think it's out of the drawing.
Right, so I don't see what there was a screen.
It was gonna be over here, but it's out of the drawing, this is a closet, this is the entryway, this is another closet.
I'm just trying to be clear on what it is.
It's an apartment with a bedroom and a.
I was trying to.
And an office.
So you're not doing the screen?
We're not doing the screen.
Okay, so, so it's, but it says eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven square feet, not including the screen though, so is it more than eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven square feet? You know?
No, it's the same amount of space, we're just not putting a screen room in, we put a closet in instead.
But it's still the same square footage with, okay, listen, I don't, I'm not trying to be in an argument here, I'm just trying to.
Okay, but it's, it's not there.
No, no.
Okay, we've taken.
Yeah, I'll, Jude, I think I'm gonna tell him, I'll check on it, okay?
Thank you.
I know what you're saying, let's not go around in circles, I was gonna check through.
Right, cause then it's a square footage question, right?
Well, I mean, if, if we wait for the new law to come in, I would be able to do it.
If the new law comes in.
Right, if the new law comes in, but I need, I, I need a place to live.
I understand, listen, I understand, and this is.
But she was just trying to find out the tickets, the way this is worded, and, uh, it's a square footage, it's square, I'll check on it. So, is the garage existing, it's not existing, so none of this entire building is not existing. Any other questions? Marcia?
No.
No? Joseph? Good? Okay, so, Marcia, I'd like to read the contiguous neighbors.
Um, New York State D E P, seventy-one Smith Avenue, Nadia Steiner and Paul Yoder, eighty-five eighty-seven Cross Patch Road. David and Mary Isles, eighty Stuveson Avenue, Ryan, New York. There was no communications.
Okay, so nobody here, no communications, so with that, uh, I'd like to recess the, uh, before that, I guess I'll still call you, I have your numbers to meet you. Seven-five-oh, okay, so I will call that and, uh, I'm trying to get some time next week, okay? Yes?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's good?
Yeah.
Better for me, so probably one of those days, maybe we can do it, well, I'll call you in the early part of the weekend. Rachel, okay.
Okay.
There we go. So with that, we'll recess the public hearing of twenty-three nineteen. I mean, close public hearing?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And with that, we will recess case twenty-three nineteen, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
There was enough daylight after the meeting, I think. So. Yeah, tell him, I mean, he may just see me drive by, drive in or whatever. Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Yeah. She's not what?
She's on.
She's on the other side of the line.
Well, I don't care about, I don't care about those, dummy test.
But I mean, I just don't feel that.
She can say what she wants, no?
I'm welcome.
Don't have to, don't have to pick offense, she can say things, we don't, you know.
But I was, but I was right, there was, there was a discrepancy there.
Right.
And it was worded sort of awkwardly?
Yes, yes, well, because.
Like it didn't say screen porch, which was said screen room.
That's what I thought, yeah, screen porch, yeah.
I thought it was like a swimming room.
Right, right. Right, well, that's a pretty small, seven square feet, that's seven by ten, right? I'm the only one that can watch the movie tonight, two of us, that's it. Alright, so.
Yeah, I read those applications, Gordon.
Let's start with the oldest one. Well then, at least we'll get Rosalind Markelson.
Oh my gosh.
Okay, I'd like to open up cases, CBA case twenty-three-ten, do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody wish to discuss before I read the resolution?
No.
Based upon the standards for consideration, vary variances, additional public compliance, stated representation, area variances of the zoning law in town of Woodstock, part of the four areas of regulation. Section two sixty to sixteen, with attachment to the application of the seven-foot infringement into a twenty-five-foot required rear yard setback to construct a seven-foot by eighteen-foot single-story addition hereby granted. Uh, subject to all requirements of the zoning law, town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law, and all other applicable laws, codes, and regulations, as follows, quarter one five, next thing we on absent, Judith Salado.
Aye.
Joseph Bellak.
Aye.
Marcia's willing.
Aye.
Martin Mills is absent, resolutions, resolutions adopted by a vote of four in favor. None opposed, one, uh, two absent, and zero abstaining. Sign this, don't forget, today is the twenty-second. Six-twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, very good, sign, seal. Be delivered. Hey, with that, uh, I would like to open up CBA case. Oh, yeah, yeah, I like to close CBA case twenty-three-ten.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'd like to open up case CBA twenty-three sixteen, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anyone wish to discuss before I read the resolution? Alright, based upon the standard consideration, vary variances set forth in section two sixty to thirty-two A, and G of the zoning law in town of Woodstock, and area variances of the zoning law in town of Woodstock, part of the five supplementary regulations. Section two sixty to thirty-two A, fences, walls, and gates, and G to allow the construction of a six-foot-high driveway gate in the front yard and driveway where only a four-foot gate is allowed. Says, said variance hereby denied, subject to all requirements of the zoning law, town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law, and all other applicable laws, codes, and regulations, votes as follows. Yes, I agree with the resolution, next thing we on absent, Judith Salado.
Aye.
Joseph Bellak.
Aye.
Marcia's willing.
Aye.
Martin Mills absent, the, 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 the resolution is adopted, vote in four in favor, zero opposed, two absent, and zero abstaining. Okay, so, um, that I'd like to close, CBA case twenty-three sixteen, do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Jude, you want to discuss this, uh, this, um, burning desire, shall we say? Firewood, burning desire, get it?
Yeah, I got it.
That's a joke, okay.
You know, this is.
I can't see you smiling.
I know.
You probably weren't.
This is how I have my death campaign.
I don't think you were smiling anymore.
So, this is the third one we've seen, I just happened to see this one, but this is getting to be a new way to get around.
Where was that located?
Secret room, most of them.
Uh-huh.
And it seems like somebody saw one and said, oh gee, what a good idea, I'll do that too, and that one that I sent has all kinds of stuff going on there. But I think, you know, don't you think that's something maybe we bring up with Butch, did you talk to him? How, what were we gonna talk about last time, you were gonna ask him something about?
I think it was about the sign, maybe that, that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, and I have noticed that some of those, it come down, that big banner came down.
Or maybe he said something.
Yeah, um, and this is a concern, because they are fences, and you know, if we're gonna have people come here and we say no, and then people are circumventing it, you know? So, um, I did, I did copy Butch on those photos.
Yeah.
Um, did you see them, Marcia?
Well, I, I did see them, but, you know, for me, it's like, how do you just, it, you know, distinguish between someone who has a legitimate wood pile?
Well, if you have it forty feet away from the house, if you've ever burnt wood.
Yeah.
You keep it as close to that door as you can, cause in the middle of winter and you're filling up your sling with wood. So somebody's, uh, I mean, it's, it's kind of obvious.
It's obvious, and you know, the other thing is, you don't usually have those things in your front yard.
Right.
Right.
Whether or not it is, let's say, well, what you've done then, is you've created this situation and you have to rectify, you know? You have to stack your wood a different way, you know, can't be six feet high in your front yard.
Right.
You know, it's just the way it is, it created a fence, whether knowingly or not. Doesn't matter, ignorance is, you know, you can't say, oh, well, gosh, I guess you got a loophole on us, it doesn't work like that.
Well, it is a fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's created a fence, no matter how you look at it, intentionally or not, it created a fence. Doesn't matter. So, alright, well. Sure, Butch is looking forward to sitting down, spending time with me.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing is that the, uh, planning board is going to, um, they have that logging workshop next Thursday, but they're also gonna have a discussion about the proposed zoning law. So I would encourage everybody to attend, if you can, on Zoom.
A logging, would you say?
Well, the first part of it is, I think they've got somebody coming from the D E C that's gonna talk about logging, and then the second part of it is gonna be a discussion about. This, the, the, it's supposed to give some kind of report to the town board, they haven't done it yet, and this is gonna be a discussion about it. So, um, I would like to go, I hope that everyone else will too, and have, you know, we can make our comments.
It's their special meeting, so there's no public hearings that night.
Right.
Well, it's also been copied on our.
Yes.
So, you know, it sounds like the town's going through the process, they took that seriously from all the groups, so. Alright, well, if there's nothing else, um, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Hey, guys, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jill and Jude, for coming in person.
No problem.
No, I'm not thanking, I'm not thanking anybody for that.
You have.
Nobody thanks me, I'm here every week. I'm set up this computer. I'm set up this computer every week, I come a half hour early, I didn't sign up.